Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for coming, everybody. Boy, it was easier for me to stand up this time with my new knee than two weeks ago, that's for sure. Thanks for coming, everybody. Uh, roll call, please.
Sandy Kufal, here. Chris O'Regan?
Here.
Kristi Hiltonan?
Here.
Artie Bryson?
Here.
Cindy Valentine?
Here.
Joanne Shirkey?
Here.
Mark Bouchard?
Here.
Okay, we're all here in a present and count for it. Do you have a quorum? I'll entertain a motion to pay some bills.
I'll make a motion for bills payable in the amount of $146,857.24. Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion, questions? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Chris O'Regan?
Yes.
Kristi Hiltonan?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Sandy Kufal?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Next, we have public comments. Do we have any public comments this time? Going once, twice. Okay, no public comments. Consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the board meeting of October 1st, 2018, and synopses, check reports, the August water report, September assessing building zoning code enforcement reports, October parks and rec updates, the road watch notice, police department resignation of Officer Pulverente, and a request from Wendy Meldrum for BSNA training in the amount of $205.
Support.
Okay, a motion and all kinds of support. Does anyone have any questions, or do we need to pull anything out? Hearing none. All in favor of the consent agenda as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Okay, brace yourself for the supervisor's report. Okay, strap yourself in. As I said, my supervisor's report, we had lots of road stuff going on. St. John's Drive, that road project was completed this past week, Tuesday, I believe. Turned out pretty nice. Has anyone drove it by any chance? They did the overlay of asphalt, and it looks real good around the manholes and everything, and it looks like it'd be a pretty good job. Also wanted to mention, they did complete the paving on the northern part of the township on Marsh. It goes all the way up to Shark Tier. And part of that job was also, they replaced two culverts going across Marsh. And they did the swartout road from Marl Road to Starville, about a mile of paving there. Started to replace the first bridge on Anchor Bay Drive. It's gonna be a one-way, it's gonna, it's gonna be a one-lane road going over that bridge till the job's completed. We did get notice last week, I think it was Tuesday. They're, and how they're, how they're doing this, they cut the bridge basically in half. They tear down, they tear, tear one half out, they leave the other half for traffic. And then they, they build new, the half they tore out, then they'll rebuild the other half of the bridge. And, excuse me, they, they're inspected, inspecting the beams underneath the old bridge that they're using, and they're quite a bit worse than they anticipated. So they're actually contemplating of condemning that bridge, and that won't work, because that's the only way on and off the, the people on those roads. So what they did, they restrict the weight to 10 tons until the, the other half of the bridge can be completed. And they expedited the construction on that, and they're hoping to have that done, the, the first half that they're rebuilding, at the end of this week or mid to next week, depending on weather. At that point, they will raise the tonnage allowed back up to 40 ton. So for about a week, week and a half, we have a 10-ton bridge, which doesn't wholly, or hold a whole lot. Garbage trucks have an issue, you know, construction trucks and everything. We do the best we can to notify everything of the change, the school buses and everything else. It was, I was on the horn to calling everybody. So it's gonna be inconvenient for about a week. More on, on roads, good news, we've, we've secured all the federal, state, and county grants to replace the Flamingo Bridge, the Flamingo Road Bridge. And they really changed the criteria on these. When we did the Merrill Street Bridge, it was considerably easier. We were only dealing with St. Clair in competition with other bridges in St. Clair County. And what they did for this federal and the state grant, we are now in competition with bridges in Macomb, Oakland, Wayne County, basically southeast Michigan. And they also raised the requirements of, of funding these bridge replacements to bridges that handle more than 8,000 cars a day. That's a significant amount of traffic. But good news is, we've, we secured the grant for Flamingo Bridge. We're the only bridge in these four or five counties that got a funding that was under 8,000 cars. We're the only bridge. And how, how it works, the engineering will start in 19, next year, to do this bridge. And once that's done, the construction right now, we're saying it's gonna be in 19, or 2020. But if something happens next year where, you know, it deems necessary, we can get a, it's called emergency construction date starts, so we could start sooner. So that's good news. The total cost right now for this bridge is $900,000. By the time we get all these, all these grants, the federal, state, and county grants, it'll end up costing the township around $5,000. So it's definitely worth doing all the work and paperwork and everything. Another thing, too, this, this bridge, we can't cut in half and keep half open like we have the other bridges, because how it's constructed. So what we're gonna do is bring in a temporary bridge, basically a floating bridge alongside it. And that's what the traffic will be using to, during the construction. And to save some of the costs to the township and everybody else, I kinda lobbied the road commission on us, you know, you guys should really need a floating bridge for this kind of stuff. So they're actually agreeing to buy it off the contractor who has to buy it for the, for the project, you know. So the county will have a floating bridge on the deal. The DDA is in the process of replacing our electronic sign in front of the township hall. They wanted to do that for us, get a nice color sign. And that, they just pulled it down middle of last week, so that's why we don't have our sign out in front. And part of that, too, is they're actually going to refurbish that sign and move it over to our mainland fire station, because there's a lot of people going to the high school and stuff that use that road, and it'd be a good spot for putting community services out. So we'll have a refurbished sign in front of the, the mainland fire station and a new sign out in front. Hopefully in two, three weeks, that will be done. Also, the, the DDA approved a facade, $5,000 facade grant for 5309 Point Trumbull. That's the old, oh, the dog, they sold dog. Yes. Cooper's, what was it called?
Cooper's K-9.
Cooper's K-9. And someone bought it, and they're converting it into an office building. We used to, we have been doing a lot of facade grants. In fact, most of the businesses in the district has had facade grants in the past. And how it works, that if it's in the district, the DDA will get, will give the property owner managing funds up to $5,000. In other words, if they spend 10 grand, the DDA will refund 5 grand. And that, that really spurred a lot of our businesses to improve the facades. Just about everyone's done it up and down the pass from St. Clair Flats Taxi Derby to, I mean, a lot of them. And that's a very good program. There's not too many properties that haven't done it yet, and this is one of them that did not. So I attended an information meeting. It was, it was kinda interesting about the East China Power Plant that's going in. They're hoping that it will be online on, in 2022, in March of 2022, actually. And it's gonna employ about 500 to 600 people. And it's gonna be very efficient. How, how it basically is gonna run, it's got, it's gonna have two big gas turbines that will be natural gas-fired and, and will create electricity. And off that, it creates a lot of heat. And then they'll take that heat and they'll put it towards a smaller steam turbine, which will turn, you know, they'll take that heat, turn it to steam, and it'll turn a third turbine. It'll also create a lot of our electricity. And it's very efficient, and it's, it was interesting. I was in discussions on how they're gonna get all these people in and out of, off the, to the plant, you know, on M29 and the back roads, and other things like that. I asked a question, well, what are they gonna do with the old existing plant? Are they gonna tear it down or whatever? They, they just said, they're not gonna, no plans to tear it down, they're gonna shut it down. Basically, he said DT is good at shutting down plants, but not good at tearing them down. So, and just FYI, too, the old power plant in Canada is Port Lampton. If you go down the river, you see a big Port Lampton building on it. That building, Canadian Hydro is gonna tear that one down here pretty soon. This is for the, the board, it's for everyone, but I wanted to mention, there's been a lot of discussions with, about our sewer system with the county the past few weeks. Our sewer collection system, I should call it. A little bit of history, back in 1975, the county built our wastewater treatment plant and the initial sewer system on the mainland. And 1975, they turned it over to the municipalities. So the plant is actually owned by Clay Township, Ira Township, and the city of Algonac by percentages of what we use. And, and we got, you know, this big, long document when they turned it over to us. And in the whole collection system, there's basically two parts. I wanna get this right. The, the main part, the big trunk that goes along M29 and up toward, towards the north part of the township through Algonac, through Ira, and along M29 to the, the plant, is, is called the, the interceptor sewer and sewer system, and it also involves these pumping stations. Then the rest of the collection system is owned by, like, in the township, us, is the feeder lines that go into this big trunk line, if you will. I hope that makes sense. And all along, the whole time, they, the county's been telling us that the township's responsible for, for all of it, the respective municipalities, Algonac, Clay, and Ira. And we're responsible for maintaining it and everything ourselves. And lo and behold, we went back and found some paperwork in 1975 that basically, it says, when they turn it over, the interceptor sewer and pumping stations, the main trunk, will be maintained by the county, not us. And the rest of the collection system will be maintained by the township. So I brought this up to the county. Let me back up. So we own, all three municipalities own the, the plant and everything. We pay St. Clair County Department, St. Clair County to manage it for us. So they've been managing the plant for us, and they, they do a pretty good job. Well, like I say, the county's been saying, no, this is up, you know, for you guys to maintain, and, and you guys are responsible for it. We just did some work at our lift station by Pearl Beach. And my question was, 100% of Ira's, we'll call it wastewater, goes through that, and our system, what part, don't they have any ownership of it? You know, why, why is it just Clay? And same thing in Algonac, we have, you know, this north part of Clay, then there's Algonac. And if there's a problem with Algonac, you know, part of our wastewater goes through that system, too. It wouldn't just be Algonac. And that's what spurred it. And so we found the old paperwork that said, basically said the county is still responsible for maintaining this main trunk of, of the lines. And so I brought it to their attention, we're gonna have a meeting. I don't have a date set, I'm just getting back online, really, with my surgery. But we're gonna set up a date in the next week or two and to discuss this. I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention that, yeah, what they've been telling us and what is, is true is, is two different things. So ultimately, we will, you know, we will have to pay for our share. And we know, actually, we know the percentage of wastewater is, you know, generated from Clay and from Ira and Algonac. But that'll be worked out. But main thing is, I wanna, wanna know who's responsible for maintaining it. Uh, let's see.
Good research.
What's that?
Good research.
Thank you. We got, right now, this is way cool. What's going on right now next door? Our, the police is doing Hunter Safety Course. We have 50 kids enrolled. This is our sixth year we've been doing it. And it's free for everybody. And I know they got a full, full, it's full of kids and their parents, and that's, that's a very good program. There's all kinds of rec programs that we have going on. If you're on Facebook, go to Clay Township Parks and Rec and like that page. But we have tons of stuff going on. I'll just mention a few things. We have a bus trip going to a Lions game, December 2nd, 71 bucks, and that includes the ticket. We have yoga classes starting in December. We have 2020, 20, I think it was that, 20 cardio, 20% stretching, and 20%.
20% cardio, or 20 minutes of cardio, 20 minutes of weights, and 20 minutes of.
Weight.
Yeah.
Core, yeah. That's starting also in December. And guts and glutes, starting in, in December, two classes. Two weeks from yesterday, the last Saturday in September, or October, we're doing our scarecrow festival, and that's been a real popular festival. And we're amping it up more this year. We're having the face painting still, again. We're having scarecrow competitions, and then we have stuff where people can come and make their own scarecrows. That's real popular. I think we got it set up for about 120, 150 people can make scarecrows and take it home. The kids love that. I know we're gonna have photo ops with Brenda Lewis. You can take family pictures. This is all for free. They can take scarecrows, I mentioned that. We have a magician coming, Andy Makar, M-A-K-A-R. He's a good musician. No, not musician. Magic man. My tongue gets tangled. We have Halloween artists and vendors coming, the Paw Patrol is gonna be there. We have a dancing lesson, so you can learn how to do the Thriller. Michael Jackson's Thriller going on. Let's see, a trunk and treat. We have a 61-foot obstacle course people can run through. I don't know if they'll beat Joanne's time or not. And all kinds of fun stuff that day. This is the last Saturday in, from 12 to 5 on Halloween, or the last Saturday of October. And that's about all I have. So thank you. Okay, next, we have nothing unfinished business, new business. First thing we have to do, or on the agenda is to reappoint Whitey Simons to the planning commission. I, he sent me an email with his, he'd like to be reappointed, and I'm recommending to the board that we reappoint Whitey to our planning commission for a three-year term.
Make a motion to appoint Whitey Simon to the planning commission, Clay Township.
Support.
Yeah, motion and support. Any, any comments or anything? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Next, we have to reappoint, reappoint Tom Cozel. I did not get in writing yet from him if he wishes to do that, so I would like to make a motion that we table that till the next meeting.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of tabling a reappointment of Tom Cozel, signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Next is the reappointment of Mark Bouchard, our planning commissioner, our board rep. Mark, do you wanna be reappointed?
Yes. Okay. I'll make a motion that we reappoint Mark Bouchard to the planning commission. Terms 11/15/2018 to 11/15 of 2021.
Support.
Okay, motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, anyone oppose? Motion carries.
Congratulations, Mark.
Congratulations, Mark. All right, next, we have a new hire for electrical inspector. We've had in the past where, well, Sid is our billing inspector and also our electrical inspector. Sometimes he's on vacation or sick or can't get to it, or at conferences or something. I, it's nice to have a backup, because I sure, the billing department's really busy.
And have been.
What's that?
And have been.
And have been. And it's nice to have a backup if someone needs an electrical inspection done. And that's basically what this is all about. So I'll entertain a motion.
Everybody afraid to pronounce his last name?
Yeah.
Because I'll make the motion.
I love that, too.
I'll say his last name again, so I will make a motion that we hire Anthony, one more time, Chris.
Yaro.
Yaro. As a part-time electrical inspector.
Support.
Wanna say effective immediately?
Effective immediately.
Thank you.
Support.
Put him out tomorrow?
Yep. Okay, we have motion and support. Any discussion?
He looks as though he's highly qualified.
Yep.
Is he here?
No.
Yes, he is.
Oh, yeah.
So how do you pronounce your last name?
Yaro.
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 Were you giggling back there while we were struggling?
Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you for coming.
You live in the township? Oh, okay, awesome.
Who, who will he direct report to?
Well, Cindy would, if, if we need an inspection by him, Cindy would, would call him and notify him.
Cindy will dispatch?
Yep. Yeah, she's the coordinator.
Okay.
Cindy Babish.
So he will report to Cindy, or does he report to you?
He, he reports, I, really, to the billing department.
To Sid?
To Sid and me.
Okay, okay.
So, okay. Any questions, Andy, or Anthony? Are you, are you Andy or Anthony? Anthony, any questions, Anthony, before we throw you in the pit? Okay.
No, I certainly don't have a problem with, with appointing him. Was this posted or anything like that, or how was it come about? Refused referral, or?
Um, it was, it was referred, and we've been looking for a while.
Okay.
So.
He said he's pretty well qualified.
Yep.
I'm good with that.
His expiration date of his license is in December. I assume you'll.
Yeah, that's my contractors, my masters. My inspector's license is 21, 2021.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of hiring Anthony Yaro?
Yaro.
Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Congratulations, Anthony. Welcome aboard. Okay, next, we have a new invoicing system, cloud payments. Chrissy, you wanna take it away?
Um, invoice cloud is an electronic payment processing, the third party. So I'm recommending that we use invoice cloud to replace the company that we're currently using called Point and Pay. We were introduced to invoice cloud through a BSNA user group meeting. So they are fully integrated with BSNA. All the payments would be live into the system. And I've spoke about it at a couple other meetings. They offer a lot of the same thing that Point and Pay currently has, and then they offer some new things, which are paperless billing, reminders, you can connect, if you sign up for their service, you can connect your calendar, so you get your, your bills are automatically put into your, whatever calendar you're using, if it's Google, or, I can't think of all the different calendars right now. Text reminders, you can pay via text, you can set up recurring payments, so.
Recurring payments is big. We've got, we get so many requests. I go to Florida all winter, and, you know, I don't get my mail down there so good, and.
Yeah. And if you set up a recurring payment through your checking account, like an ACH payment, that is much, much, much cheaper than currently what we're, what they're using. An e-check through Point and Pay is 3%. Right now, this company is 95 cents if you set up a recurring payment. So it's a lot cheaper.
That's a good thing.
Yep. Better, faster, and it's cheaper for our customers, too.
They have double encryption through their website, so they've never had a data breach. They are level-one PCI compliant, so that's the highest level of payment card processing service you can have.
Better than Target?
I hope so.
When, if we give us the blessing, when can, when will this take effect?
Well, it takes.
When you go to the switch?
It'll take them about 90 days.
Okay.
Typical, it's, he said it's somewhere between, the shortest time it's been is 45 days. The longest they anticipate is 90. So I'm hoping by the first of the year, if we get going on it, we can have it up and running.
Are we locked in for any length of time?
No.
Make a motion, Chrissy.
Is this the same, same payment structure that you were kicking around in the last meeting?
Yes.
And you've, you've done your homework on, on several methods of payment, correct?
Yes.
And this is the one that, that you're recommending to us based on usability, fees, reliability?
Yeah, I feel like this one has the most to offer, as far as all the, you know, we were looking for ACH through the bank, and that wouldn't be at any cost, but it would be a lot of paperwork for us to maintain. This is all, if, if a customer signs up through their system, it goes live into our system. We don't have to, we don't touch any account numbers. We don't have to check any boxes. It's all automated. Then we asked, what if a customer changes their email address or something like that? That is, that comes through a report, and that goes into the system as well. So we don't have to touch any of that. And we would actually get a, if they're getting a bounce-back notification that an email address is no good anymore, we would actually get a report to let us know so that we can send out a paper bill.
It's cheaper to use this than it is for us to send out a paper bill.
Yes.
Well, I will say, over the last few years, anytime we've gone to the MTA, we've gone into the vendor areas, even, you know, before Christie was here, we've been looking for a few years, because that Point and Pay can be expensive when you're trying to do it through the online portal, and especially if you're paying taxes, it's not something you wanna pay through. But there hasn't been anything. There hasn't been anything. So it's nice to see that someone's finally being competitive with them, and that they're through BSNA, so.
Yes.
And that's gonna be probably the biggest part, is that they're part of BSNA.
Integrated, yeah, already.
And the auditors are okay with this system?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. So I suppose our customers or their, they would be mandatory sign-in once we switch over to the other system? They're going to have to sign up, right?
Well, it's not mandatory. They don't have to sign up to use it, but I think it would be beneficial, and it definitely is cheaper than Point and Pay, so if they choose to use it, I think people will love it once they get going on it.
Once the bugs are out, I think we should try to direct people to do that.
Oh, yeah.
Because it's cheaper for them and us.
Yeah.
A lot of our residents like coming in today.
Right. I'll entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to approve using invoice cloud processing for our electronic processing of payments.
Support.
Yeah, motion and support. Any discussion? I just want to mention, because I, I've had several people, you know, ask me, Artie, how come if you're, if I'm paying something electronically for, for the township, and it's like this for all municipalities, why do I have to pay the convenience fee? In private businesses, most of them, they, they eat it. You know, there's, to, to take a credit card, to process a credit card, there's a fee back towards the, you know, the businesses and, and the township. But it's really not even legal, but it's not average to, say, if, if you come into the township, you want to pay something by a credit card. Basically, you're putting the burden of, of the convenience on, on all the taxpayers. And, you know, that's really a unjust, unjust fee to the taxpayers that don't use the convenience fee, if that makes sense. So that's why, basically, and they'll tell you, it's, you know, it's against the law for us to pass it to, along to the, or it's, it's against the law for us to absorb the convenience fee of doing credit card processing by these, these credit cards, you know, because it's not fair to the rest of the taxpayers that, you know, do it by check or come in person, and basically that's why. But the system's definitely cheaper than Point and Pay, which we've been using, and I just want to make that clarification, why that we have to do the service charges and...
And actually, we're not the ones that are processing.
Right, we don't process it, we don't collect, they do.
Right.
Thank you.
Chrissy, can we ask a quick question in regards to when you get the convenience fees? But you said that the 95 cents, but is there also a percentage fee on how much you're, or if you're taking it out of a credit card? Are they charging the percentage?
They're charging, they're charging a flat fee on a credit card or a debit card, but if you're, if you sign up for a one-time check payment, it's $1.95. If you sign up for a recurring check payment, and this is on utility or tax.
Okay.
It's 95 cents.
Okay, and then, do you know what, do you know what their fee is for a credit card or debit card?
For credit card or debit card on utility bill, it will be $3.25 up to $400. So if you have a bill that you're paying that's over 400 utility.
Yeah.
Then you would have to make multiple payments, because there are, there's a Visa regulation that does not allow them to charge a convenience fee on a utility payment.
Oh.
So it's a flat fee of $3.25 up to $400. On taxes, it's 2.75%. Point and Pay was 3%, so.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other discussion? This isn't, it's not, it's not a contract, it's just an agreement, right?
Yeah, there isn't a contract.
No, okay. All in favor of, we do have a motion, don't we?
Yes, and support.
Yep, okay, all in favor of switching our electronic processing to invoice cloud payments, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Next, we have Resolution 201847, anti-vaping ordinance, number 143.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 201847, which is an anti-vape ordinance, number 143.
Support. Motion and support. We, we handed this out to you guys, to the board via email, and we, we did make a few adjustments with some concerns. Basically, this anti-vaping ordinance basically says that you cannot sell these vape pipes or related supplies, I guess you would call it, to minors. And it's just like cigarettes, they gotta be 18. And there's no vaping on school property. There's a big problem in the schools, and they came to us and asked us for help, help with this, by the tune of an ordinance. So they can't be, they gotta be at least 18 to purchase it in the township, and there's no vaping on school and public property, right?
On school grounds.
On school grounds, so.
Anywhere on school grounds.
Yep. I'll entertain a motion.
We have a motion.
Oh, you got a motion?
We have support.
Okay, any more discussion? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'd just like to touch on this just a little bit. I, I spent a lot of time at the school. I've talked to the principal, I've talked to the athletic director, I've talked to the vice principal, I've talked to some teachers. I talked to our resource officer. I spent a lot of time on this because I wasn't sure how I felt about it initially as a township, coming into this vape ordinance for the schools, that portion of the ordinance. This is a huge distraction for the Elginex School District right now, to the tune where between three and six kids every day get busted vaping in the bathrooms, and it could probably be 25 or more if they really spent the time to police it. So the distraction aspect of this is really, really big. We don't want to punish the kids, we don't want to fine the kids, but what we do need is a strong deterrent to keep this out of our school district. So that is the, that is my intention, and while, why I will support this resolution, is, is to keep that off of our school grounds. I think it's important to eliminate distractions. Education is very difficult as it is, reduce state funding and et cetera, et cetera. We, we need to, we need to eliminate all possible distractions, so. Did we get into the civil fines?
As part of it, go for it.
So, I'm just going to speak to the parents in the younger generation for a moment, the kids that are actually in the school. There are three steps or levels to, to this ordinance. The first step will consist of a $50 fine that the student or person that is caught vaping will be responsible for. Right now, a lot of the kids, if they're caught, they come down to the office, they get a slap on the hand, they get sent home. Well, most of them are okay with that. You know, it's, it's okay to get sent home for the day. So we need something with a little more teeth, something that's going to really strongly deter them from vaping in school. The second violation for these kids, the second violation is punishable by a fine of not more than $100. So we go from 50 to 100 on your second violation. If you are caught a third time vaping on school premise, that fine jumps to $300, 300 bucks. And there is, there is a level of community service that the violator will also be responsible for as part of the agreement. So, the ordinance has more language in it. I'm sure we'll have it posted online, you're welcome to read it. But in, in a nutshell, we're trying to have a strong deterrent to support our high school staff, our resource officer that we put over there, and have them focus on the things that are, that are more important.
Chris, question. How is there smoking, just regular smoking policy? You know, is it, is it about like the same thing? Not $300, but they're caught in the bathroom smoking, but...
I...
It says more alternative.
Yep, alternative, right?
Yep.
So I, I would assume that they're going to go hand in hand.
Yeah.
But, but I'm not going to pronounce that, that I'm going to be an expert on, on that topic. I don't know.
But they do have, they do have some...
They do.
Regulations about smoking.
They do, and I spend a lot of time at the school, a lot of time. And I'm, I'm here to tell you that there's not too many young people that smoke inside the school.
The vaping is so much easier to hide.
Yeah.
Than cigarettes, so.
Yeah, just for the sheer, you know, smell, right? If you're, if the kids are smoking, you know, you're not going to get by a, a resource officer or by your teachers and you just, you just won't. You'll smell.
You'll stink, yeah.
You'll smell. Vaping is a little different, you know, it's a different game. So, I think we have the motion. We have support.
We have motion and support, and just to let everybody know, this, this would be in effect, we have to publish it in, in the paper, and it goes into effect 30 days after we, we publish it. Any more discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Christie Hilton?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine?
Yes.
Joanne Shurkey?
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Sandy Kupel?
Yes.
Crystal Reagan?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Next on the agenda is a vehicle purchase. We're looking to replace our old sad white Taurus that's out in the parking lot. You can hear it falling apart right now.
I don't see it.
Sherri, last time Sherri, you said there's all kinds of buzzers and whistles.
Again?
And...
I won't drive, I wouldn't drive it.
We looked at the Ford Explorer and the Flex and the Ford, the Ford Explorer's cheaper. I have, like, the base price for an Explorer of $25,634, or if you wanted to do four-wheel drive, it's $27,447. This is through the state lien. It's a heck of a lot cheaper than you and I could buy this vehicle for. I wish I could buy a Explorer for 25 grand. And I guess we'd have to decide if we want the four-wheel drive or not, and...
You mean front-wheel drive?
Right. Versus...
Front wheel or four-wheel?
Or four-wheel.
Something goes wrong with a four-wheel, you got big bucks to fix it.
Yeah.
So, and if they're not used, they don't, you gotta use them a lot.
Don't they have an all-wheel drive?
Um, only for the police package.
Yeah, police package.
That's what I would...
Are we in discussion? Yeah, well, let's do a motion.
I'd do a motion for us to purchase a Ford Explorer, line 201, or 101, 265-9700. However, we live in Michigan, the car does get used for a lot of training travel to Upper Michigan, so I would, my motion would be for the four-by-four.
Support. Okay, a motion and support. We'll open up for discussion.
If we would get the use of a four-by-four.
Right.
And you just stated, which it makes sense.
Well, we're always going to Grand Rapids, we're going to Traverse City, Midland, we're going all over the place. And Sherri, I mean, you, you get into some, during your assessing, some...
Yeah, new construction out in the fields and stuff.
You know, and she's driving down driveways in our, that are just dirt.
And it'd be well worth it, yeah.
My wife has driven a Ford Explorer for probably the last 10 or more years. In, in the first six years or so, it was a, a two-wheel drive model, and it was awful in the snow. Awful. They have a anti-slip traction device that alternates power, and, and frankly, I, I didn't care for it, not one little bit.
Like driving a pickup with nothing in it.
Yep. Yep, it, it doesn't put the power to the road in inclemente weathers. It, it just will not. It kind of takes over for you, which I, I didn't find, you know, an enjoyable experience. And for the money difference at this price, you know, I, I think it's a pretty decision for me.
I did put $30,000 for, in the budget for this line item, too. So it is budgeted, and we, it would be under budget.
And also, you know, as far as driver education is concerned, not to use the four-wheel, you know, four-wheel drive mode during drive payments and only use it when necessary, that'll take wear and tear off the system. Just as a note, I would prefer to see an all-wheel drive vehicle, which is a lot less expensive to operate and as well as the repairs are concerned. You don't have that big transfer case in an all-wheel drive vehicle. But since we don't have that option right now, and though it is more expensive, although it costs less for the manufacturer to make than to make a real true four-wheel drive, we'll go ahead and, I agree with Cindy on the four-by-four.
I was leaning toward silver. We have blue, black, white, or silver.
Would that be the, your, your vehicle, Artie?
Uh, well, it's the township's. I share it with Sherri and whoever goes on training. You know, we go to Lansing a lot for BSNA training.
Black's hard to keep clean.
Black, white's hard to keep clean, blue.
White's hard to see.
We don't want blue. Silver, okay. Any more discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Well, wait, what are we bidding on? What are we...
Uh, the motion is to purchase Explorer four-by-four at $27,477, or, yeah, $447.
Okay.
So, roll call vote, please.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine?
Yes.
Joanne Shurkey?
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Sandy Kupel?
Yes.
Crystal Reagan?
Does this cover any graphics package?
No.
We'll, we'll put a stick on it. Put on that later?
Yeah, we'll put a stick on it.
Yes.
Christie Hilton?
Yes.
Any more? Motion carries. Next, we, we put out some bids, Chris can elaborate on this some more. Put out some bids to do the work on the Carson's Island Fire Department of redoing the, updating the kitchen and the bathrooms. We've been, this is much needed for a long, long time. And how many bids did you send out, Chris?
Chief and I sent out five bids.
Five bids, and we received three back.
Yep.
And we emailed them all to, to the board, but Chris is, this is kind of his line of business, so I asked Chris to review them and give the board a recommendation. So you want to go ahead and do that, Chris?
Yeah. So maybe a month and a half, two months ago, the chief and I, some firefighters, Joanne, I think, was there. We walked the Carson's Island Fire Hall, and we, we identified at the fire hall some of the important building needs. The building itself, the structure is aging, and it needs some updates. Specifically, we looked at some of the, the big, bigger type items, which included the bathroom, the shower area, the kitchen, the bunk rooms, and, and some, some light work on the commons area. So what we did after that is we've sort of identified and itemized what we would like to see done in those areas, and we created a, a scope with line item detail, and we shipped the scope out without any of the numbers to five building contractors in our area, and we'll call them local builders. Three of the five submitted sealed bids to our supervisor on time, and of the three bids, it would be my recommendation, after an extensive review of all three bids, and I believe we have them in our packet.
Yeah.
So we had a bid from Alt Vacancy Solutions. We had a bid from Joe Stevenson Builders... We had a bid from Joe Stevenson Builders, and we had a bid from Star Modernization. The Alt Vacancy Solutions bid came in at fifty-five thousand nine sixty-seven. The Joe Stevenson Builders bid came in at forty-nine thousand five hundred dollars. And the Star Modernization bid came in at forty-two thousand four hundred and fifty-three dollars, which was less than what we had budgeted for. Not significantly less, but it was less. It's my recommendation at this time that we, the township hire Star Modernization to perform the set building improvements to the Harson's Island Fire Department.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Do we have support?
I'll have, I'll say, I'll support to, you know, have a little discussion.
Okay.
Ask a question.
All right.
On the last page of Star, it says the electrical bid item, just a clarification, this item is undefined without specifications. Approx allowance of two thousand is factored into the proposal for this line item. If awarded, clarification of this line item will be needed. What does that entail? Your expertise with doing that? Do we have to anticipate the two thousand will come up and pay for that?
Yes.
The two thousands in that
It is built in a factor of two thousand dollars' worth of electrical services.
Okay.
So anytime we talk about bathrooms, remodeling kitchens, you talk about code issues, which have to do with GFI receptacles, art fault breakers, hardwired smokes, tamper-resistant outlets, any wiring that may or may not be to code. So, from a construction standpoint, these builders really don't know exactly what they're getting into until the walls open up, they inspect the services that are there, and we get some direction from our building department onto, you know, how to comply with the current ordinances that exist.
So what you're saying is, is the bid won't be over forty-two thousand, may even be less?
It may even be less.
Because there is an allowance, okay.
Even be less, however, if they go in there and encounter
Even if it is added on, it'll still be the lowest bid.
It is the lowest bid of the three bids that we received.
That's all, that's
That is correct.
Who's gonna sign off on any field orders or field changes?
Well, I would think that it would be a combination of the fire chief and our supervisor. Ultimately, I believe any change orders would fall under responsibility of our supervisor, and although I'm not trying to push the can
No, that's no problem. Would that come back to the board?
Depending on the cost.
If it's over, it would, but if it's not, it wouldn't.
So, be mute, okay.
Wouldn't the building inspector have some
Well, he signs off on the work.
Our new electrical inspector will be on the case.
I would think that'd be a perfect opportunity.
Okay, sounds good to me.
I'd like to mention that I know the Harson's Island, the women's group or the cattails, they raised, I think it was like six thousand dollars that they wanted to get put towards the bathrooms and the kitchen, the work needed done. And also, in this budget, we created a special line item to track that, and that wasn't done before. And then a couple of years ago, too, there was a donation of five thousand dollars from these people that had a boating accident. That was supposed to be spent on the island, too. And that was also pulled out, pulled out of the, because it wasn't tracked, and it was spent, that five thousand dollars was spent elsewhere. I pulled that five thousand dollars out of the fire general fund and put into that line item, and we just received another hundred dollars for it, towards that. So there's eleven thousand, and I'm not sure exactly what it is, some change, and that money's gonna go towards this also. Does that answer your question? No? Okay. Did you have a question?
Actually, just a couple of things. I know Brian Trapaw, who's the owner of Star Modernization, is currently on the heat, I believe, on still in the ZBA, is that right?
Yeah, he's on the ZBA.
Board of Appeals, Appeals, that's
Obviously, being this was a sealed bid, I'm assuming that that has nothing to do with that.
Right.
The other question I have is, when you made the decision as to which company to go with, was that decision primarily made based on the dollar amount that, of the bid? The, is there any background on the companies, or do you get, do you look at their track record with regards to the quality of their work? Speaking from experience with the particular company and money, it would just be, I think, advantageous for you to make sure that the quality and the warranty of the workmanship is followed up on with that.
I can appreciate your comments. I have twenty-six years in the building profession. I am a professional estimator by trade, and I spent a lot of time qualifying, along with Chief Rose, who exactly these bid packages were going to. We had a couple of criteria that were driving our decision-making, one being we wanted a reputable local contractors. So that narrowed our search from about a dozen to less than a dozen. And then from there, what we did is we sent out recommendations, we sent out our scope sheets. So what I'm doing today is I'm making a recommendation based on, number one, qualified, pre-qualified contractors, and number two, based on the dollar amount of the bid, the bids that were submitted. So my recommendation is based off of a low bidder situation. I'm trying to be frugal with the taxpayers' money.
Okay.
So let me ask the supervisor if there's a degree of conflict of interest?
Not with a closed bid.
Okay. It was only closed until it was opened.
Right. All right, any more discussion before we go ahead and vote? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Oh, Joanne Sherkey?
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Crystal Reagan?
Yes.
Kristi Hilton?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Okay, motion carries. Next, we have a bill from Bayview Engineering on the Falkirk Road construction project. Just wanna explain to the board and other people, this is a little out of the ordinary, but we, this does come up, and it'll probably come up again in the near future. Project Control Engineering is our township engineering firm. A lot of townships and cities, when a project comes before them, they want every, everything coming before a planning commission to have their engineering stamp on it, which is very costly, point-blank, to the applicants. We basically leave it up to our building inspector. If he deems, you know, this project is fairly big, it needs to get an engineering review, then we pass it off to our engineers. Because an engineering review costs between two and, for a general one, costs between two and four thousand dollars. And for every person and applicant going before our planning commission, that would be two to four thousand dollars more in fees, which a lot of times aren't necessary. That being said, that not every project that comes before us gets an engineering evaluation done on the site. For us to say to Project Control, you can't do any engineering on any projects in the township, wouldn't be fair, because they'd be turning down more business than the township gives them. Does that make sense? So if Project Control actually does the engineering on a project, we don't have them review and give us an opinion on their own work. That doesn't, you know, that wouldn't be ethical, and does that make sense? So if there's a project that comes before us that we want an opinion and of an engineer, if Project Control does that engineering, we'll farm it out to another engineering company. And a lot of the times, we use Bay Shore Engineering LLC. A lot of people know Matt, Matt Mueller.
Bayview.
What's that?
Bayview.
Bayview, yeah.
Yeah, you said Bayshore.
Oh, I'm sorry, Bayview Engineering, I'm sorry. So that's why that this is in our packet. I just wanna approve this bill that we pay for, because it's not going to our normal engineering firm that the township uses. So, just to, excuse me, Artie, just to elaborate a little bit on that, the planning commission did approve the original concept and the site plan. There were some questions that did come up as far as the wetlands are concerned and the drainage, and this was the right thing to do, getting a different engineering firm to go ahead and take a look at that, just to make sure that the township is on the safe side of all of this, so.
Right.
Yeah, good job on that. So, I just wanna bring it to everyone's attention that, and we will have one or two of these coming in the near future, too. We got some big projects coming up on the township. So I'll make a motion that we approve the engineering construction costs of two thousand four hundred and thirty-three dollars and sixty-four cents to Bayview Engineering LLC.
Support.
Support.
Okay, we have support. Discussion, too, this is, this will be recouped in fees to the app, from the applicant for this. So it's not money out of the township, it's basically, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna charge the applicant this twenty-four hundred and thirty-three dollars, so. We have motion and support, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have approval of a KCI bill to, it's for our tax coming out.
Yep, this is the printing and mailing of our tax bills. It's no change in company, KCI has been printing, since I've been here, they've been printing all of our bills. I'm not sure how long before that, but this is just an estimate, we're estimating fifty-two hundred bills, and the postage for fifty-two hundred bills would be one thousand nine hundred and sixty-five dollars and sixty cents, and the printing would be eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars, so two thousand seven hundred and ninety-three dollars and sixty cents.
Is there a motion?
Yes. Support.
Motion and support. And just so everybody knows, we've done multiple studies on this. This company, KCI, can do it much cheaper than we can print and mail it out. Just the mailing alone, for us to mail it at, what, forty-nine or what is it now, forty cents?
Fifty cents.
Fifty cents envelope, it costs us a lot more to do it in-house than to sub this out. So we have motion and support for KCI to do our tax billing at an estimate of twenty-seven hundred and ninety-three dollars and sixty cents. Any more discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. All right. Board member comments? Cindy, you have anything?
I think it was a pretty exciting meeting, we got a lot accomplished, I feel like. Glad to see the vape ordinance for the schools, I know it's a huge problem over there, and like Chris had said, a big distraction. Glad to see us moving forward with doing something over on the island with the fire station. Hopefully, that'll make it a little bit more accommodable for our firefighters to want to spend some time over there. And welcome Anthony Yarrow.
Mark?
Good job tonight, Cindy, good job on the cloud payment. And welcome Anthony.
I'll just repeat, that's what all that Cindy said.
Yeah, what she said.
And welcome Mr. Yarrow to our staff.
Sandy?
Well, I missed the last meeting, unfortunately, and I heard that Mr. Latos came in and gave a report on the resource officer. So I wasn't here, but I saw it, so I wanna thank him for coming in, and I hope he continues to update us on how that's going. I also wanted to say congratulations to George, our chief, for hiring some very respectful men in his department the last couple of meetings. I've actually had two or three run-ins outside of the township with a couple of the new hires, and they represented our township very well. And I didn't bring to light that I was a trustee, we just were having regular conversation, whether they knew or not, and it was very impressive, so. Congratulations on that. Looking forward to see everybody at Scarecrow Fest. That was a lot of fun last year, and it seems like it's gonna be bigger and better this year.
Thank you. Chris?
Yeah, I hope the residents of Harson's Island watch this meeting tonight. And I hope that they see we're honoring our commitments that we've made several months ago to improve the first response services to the island. We have spent money on equipment, we're now spending money on the building. The chief's done a great job of hiring new firefighters to service our area. I just hope that they recognize that and we're operating in sync with one another. This has been a difficult year and a half through the fire department, and I see a lot of positive success. And I wanna thank the chief for all your efforts and your hard work and sticking to it when the going was real tough. We're making significant progress, we're not finished. But I'm grateful for the decisions that the boards made and where we stand at this point. Elginak Football has their last home game this Friday night, seven PM, against Southfield Bradford. So, go Muskrats.
Thank you. Chrissy?
I would agree with everything that everyone has said tonight, I'm proud of the things that we're doing and gonna continue to do to improve.
Thank you. I just expound on that, I mean, right now, I think we're staffed on the island three to four days a week. When these, we, in the past month, we hired nine new guys. I think, chief, you got some more applicants still, so we'll probably get a few more. And once these guys get online and stuff, you know, hoping that we'll be able to, you know, five, six days. We're working towards our goal for seven days a week, you know, twenty-four, seven. And it's going great. I think we're getting close to where we wanna be, not quite, but we're getting there. And every day is a little better. I know there's a few more grants coming up. We're gonna try to get a grant for an engine or some kind of vehicle, is that right, chief? We're in the process of writing it, and maybe a couple other things, too. We've been very successful in the FEMA grants. There is only one fire department in the whole county that received any FEMA grants this year, and that was us, and we got two. One was just a grant for ourselves, for ventilation systems, and another one, we went in with, we wrote it, but we went in with Elginak and Marine City for safety SCOTPACs, and I think the total amount of that grant was over five hundred thousand that we received, and we just received those this past week or two. And so we've been very successful with that, and we're getting there, it's a process, so. Also like to, I'm very thankful, this, October's been busy with lots of stuff. Yesterday, we had Doggapalooza in the park with a bunch of crazy dogs running around, and it was a very successful event. I told Cindy, you know, we got so much stuff going in October, we're gonna move that to a spring event, probably in May, and we'll amp that up a spring event, probably in May, and we'll amp that up and make it bigger and better. I'm not sure how many dogs we had in the park, but it was, it was way fun.
Were they all dressed up?
What's that?
Were they all dressed up?
No, no, none were dressed up, but, you know, we had people from, oh, the Humane Society there, different groups, we had some groomers giving tips and teaching how people to cut their nails, we had a dog massage therapist, believe it or not.
My dogs would love that.
Yeah. We, we had, we had therapy dogs and we had all, it was, it was a good event and, and raised money for the Humane Society and some other things and, and a lot of other people heard about, hey, we wanna be involved next time and, you know, that's how that stuff usually works. I mean, we threw it together pretty quick. Couple months ago, we thought about, we just, without even thinking, oh, let's do it in October, okay. Well, October's a real busy month with all the Halloween stuff, so we're gonna move that to a May event probably. And that worked out really well and I'm really looking forward to the Scarecrow Fest. It's a...
That's always a lot of fun.
It's a lot of fun and, and it's all paid for pretty much by sponsors, which is better yet, as in all our events are, so looking forward to it. Other than that, if someone has something for the next meeting, let me know and I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Hey, thanks for coming, everybody.